Good evening, everybody. Welcome back to us. No one else was here earlier. We are coming back into session after a journey for executive session. So returning to open session at 7:00 PM for the May 8th, 2023 school committee meeting. I'm going to read this brief statement about remote participation. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so the Chair may inform other participants of said reporting. Tonight, we are being recorded by Harbor Media. Sheri, I think we are recording on Zoom. And is there anyone else either on the Zoom or in the room recording? No? Alright, seeing none, we will move on to our very first order of business. Actually, you know what? Yes, let's do it. Let's do the school showcase first. So we have East Elementary.
Yes, glad to welcome the East Elementary School this evening to share a little bit of something that they're proud of. Wanted to highlight tonight.
Yes, thanks for having us. We're excited to spotlight our Makerspace initiative. Makerspace is a really special thing at East. It is not one of our six specialists. However, it is an extra special class for each of our homerooms. A few years ago, from what I understand, it was an initiative of former Principal Toni Keady to bring some science, technology, and engineering into the daily operations of East Elementary. And so two of our educators, two of our specialist educators, Christina Harigi and Jenny Cena are the brains behind Makerspace and are 100% success. The success of Makerspace is without a doubt because of their efforts. So Senora Harigi is our Spanish teacher and Jenny Cena is our technology educator. And these two come together and form our Makerspace team. Over the course of their planning and over the course of the year, they develop for our students opportunities, once again, to apply science, technology, critical thinking, collaboration in the forms of hands-on, project-based learning. These projects are really well-planned. They have a few objectives. They focus again on that hands-on application. They want students to really do with their thinking. They are always challenging. Often when students arrive in Makerspace, there is a prompt or a challenge relative to each of the activities, something that students either need to achieve or something that they need to think of when they're in their groups through either a critical lens or through a trial and error lens. Which leads us to another objective that they consciously and intentionally plan for, which are opportunities to fail, revisit, and through that, kind of play around with the central focus or the central theme of the project. And within all of the opportunities, there is a sense of collaboration. Students do have the opportunity to choose to do a project independently if they wish, but if you were to stop in, many of our students are often collaborating, often even some factions of students challenging each other to beat the other groups in that class's progress. So it's really, really great. So over the course of the year, classes meet once every 12-day cycle, the Makerspace sessions are. So we've had six sessions so far this year. And each class has an opportunity to try the challenge that Senora Harigi and Mrs. Cena have developed. They have this year developed 25 unique projects for our students to challenge themselves in. And the students sometimes will tackle a challenge that many other grade levels have. So some shared challenges between three, four, and five, or K1 and 2. All of them are age-appropriate and some students have had the opportunity to try each of the challenges, whether it be over their time at East Elementary or just opportunities for the way that Makerspace schedule fell this year. And over the course of this year, due to parent donations and the wonderful connections with our arts team or even just things that Jenny and Christina developed on their own, we estimate they've used about 38,600 miles of cardboard, tape, paper, et cetera. An extra special thing, Senora Harigi is nice enough to utilize her space, which is typically for Spanish classes, but every cycle it gets taken over by Makerspace. And to walk in there and to see either Legos strewn about on the floor or paper or paper towel rolls stacked up to the ceiling, it's always really, really wonderful. I remember last spring on one of my site visits to East as a candidate for this position, walking in and seeing a Makerspace class happening and really sort of piquing my curiosity about what went into that, how did they develop the projects, et cetera. And over the course of this year, of course, have been fortunate enough to learn a lot about the planning and execution that goes into it. So in a typical Makerspace class, you may see something like the paper ball run. So in this challenge, they were given the materials that are listed up here. They were tasked with building a ball run just with paper and tape. They needed to, instead of find an obstacle and start from one point to the other, their challenge specifically in this paper ball challenge was to make the ball last as long as it can. So the longest duration in the track. How long can you make it take for the ball to get from one entrance to the exit? You can see our students planning, collaborating, using their paper, using their tape only. And then ultimately creating some really, really wonderful-looking projects. We saw them carrying them onto the bus, wondering how they were going to fit in the seats. Some of them were really, really tall. It was great. Another project, again with a challenge in mind, is your make-your-own harmonica challenge. So using, once again, sort of rudimentary supplies, just paper, popsicle sticks, straws, rubber bands, our kids were challenged to make harmonica. And after they had assembled the harmonica, they were challenged to move the straws across the width of the harmonica to sort of see if they could notice the difference in pitch or tone that they were making. There's a few of our kiddos trying them out. Another fan favorite of our students is the catapults. I think everyone in this room's probably attempted to make a catapult at one point in school. So these guys did so with rubber bands and popsicle sticks. Again, one of the things that we love to see in many of the pictures highlight is just the design process, the thinking, the playing with materials, seeing what they can do with a finite amount of resources. Another really great one, thinking through the lens of less sort of like about a challenge to achieve something like how long the track, the ball can stay on the track, or how far something can launch the catapult. I love the sort of simple but complex idea behind taking well-known landmarks from around the world and just replicating those with Legos. Got a few of our friends showing off the Arc de Triomphe, the CN Tower, and the White House. Very recently, our students took on the challenge of creating a magnet track. So they needed to plot out a track on a paper plate and then using a magnet with a vehicle affixed to it. They used a magnet on the bottom side of the plate to try and get their vehicle to sort of like move around on the track. And another fan favorite challenge, each year Miss Cena finds something to do with our 3D printers that we're fortunate enough to have at East. In the past, they've made keychains and sort of other takeaways. This year, they designed 3D-printed boats and they needed to find out how many pennies the boat could hold and whether or not it would travel along the water track with those pennies on. Here's just a sort of smattering of the 25 projects, like 3D boats, Osmo Monsters, which is something that is utilized with our iPads. It's an app that connects to that. Simple things like the 100 Cup Tower Challenge, Marshmallow geometric structures, Pipe Cleaner constellations, which we got to show off at one of our nighttime reading events, animal habitats, floating flowers, Easter egg cup stacks. Again, we can go sort of on and on and on about the ingenuity of the projects. So really, really grateful for our Makerspace team. I have some friends here. There are some students here that were recognized by the Makerspace team for really being standouts at Makerspace, whether it's their creativity or their collaboration. So I'd love to open it up for our friends that are feeling comfortable to come on up and talk a little bit about what they love about Makerspace. So my friend James, we can, here, James, come right over to the sideline. We're going to be hiding him. So this is our friend James. James, why don't you say hello to everyone? James, I would love it if you could talk to us a little bit about what you love about Makerspace.
So I like that we work in teams and we can make really cool stuff.
What was a favorite project of yours over the course of this year?
The 100 Cup Tower and the Paper Rocket Ships.
Paper Rocket Ships and 100 Cup Tower. Awesome. Sure. Come on, friends.
Up close, right up to that microphone. That way they can hear you on TV.
Awesome.
Want to maybe do it one more time?
Sure. Yeah, I know James is happy to talk about what he loves about Makerspace again.
So I like that we work in teams and we get to make really cool stuff. And I like that we can do 100 Cup Towers and Paper Rocket Ships.
My name's Caroline.
Caroline, what do you love about Makerspace?
I like that we get to work together and see what both of us can do working together. And also that my favorite thing, what we get to, what I did is making constellations with pipe cleaner and beads.
Caroline, do you remember which constellation you made this year?
I made the Big Dipper and I think the Little Dipper.
Very cool.
Amazing.
Nice job kiddo.
Thank you.
Claire, just introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Claire and I liked making an alligator habitat and we all made it kind of differently and that's awesome, like what I like about it. Some people made like monkeys on it and that was one of my favorite like things that we made.
Do you build alligators in school?
That's science department.
We should know about that. So again, each of those students, we had many other students also that were recognized and obviously a lot of our kids sort of stand out, but some of those friends were standouts from the lens of our educators. Again, I really, the wonderful opportunity that our kids have to do something extra outside of their formal specials is really great. The collaboration, the engineering, the thinking that goes into it, I'm sure you can imagine, is also really great. But it doesn't happen without the two teammates that really put, aside from their own workload, put a lot of time and energy into making special projects, switching them up each year. So Christina, thank you very much to you and Jenny for the work that you guys go in to each Makerspace cycle. So I was really excited to highlight this for you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. It's really amazing work that's being done. I've been to East School a few times and seen that Makerspace. It's such a great piece of the East School culture and offerings there. So it's amazing. So thank you. And I was going to, I was going to say this for a little bit later, but I think it goes to here, right? Like, I mean, so grateful for this community, our students, our faculty, staff, all the people on this committee who worked so hard to get the override passed so that we could continue offering these amazing things to our students. So thank you, everyone, for sharing that with us. It's really, it's really great stuff. Love these showcases. It's great. Thank you.
And thanks to the students. You guys are really brave.
You did a great job. Really great job. You're very welcome. Now we're going to get into the boring stuff that we'd love for everyone to stay for. But, alright. Bye, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, do we want to move to approval minutes?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on April 10, 2023. Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
It's minor, but when we went into executive session, there needs to be a roll call reflected in that. My notes were that the six of us were here and Matt Pasman was not, but it was, everyone was in favor of going.
And I just made that edit on the Word doc and I'll put it in the packet so you have the final draft. Okay. Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the amended minutes of the school committee meeting held on April 10, 2023. Final second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And just to clarify, we're all here in person tonight. Matt couldn't make it tonight. But Sheri, you'll let me know if he joins remotely, but I don't think he was able to. Alright, 5.2.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of a school committee meeting held on April 24th, 2023 to attend town meeting.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on April 26th, 2023.
I will second. Any discussion? Sorry, any discussion?
No.
Just talking myself. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, questions and comments? This is the portion of our meeting where we take community engagement and questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. So we have 15 minutes ahead of the regular agenda items to take public comments from folks. Again, for items not on the agenda, it is our practice to take questions and comments during new business items that are on the agenda. So if there's anyone in person or on Zoom who would like to speak now to something not on the agenda, if you want to raise your hand and let me know, and if so, I'll read this very long legalese that I have to read, but I'll skip it if no one is. Anybody in the room? Anybody? Okay, alright, great. Thank you. Then item seven, our superintendent's report.
So in the packet was an enrollment update for April. There was only the addition of one new student and enrollment has stayed relatively stable from the last enrollment update we've given you. Just also in addition, I was happy to join the Hingham Unity Council, was grateful for their collaboration with Medco this Saturday. I know several school committee members were there helping out. Thank you so much. We took a scavenger hunt through the main street and returned back to have a great lunch together. It was a great opportunity to bring Hingham families together with our Medco families and hope that it can be one of many events and traditions that we bring in collaboration and develop our relationship with Medco. In addition, on Saturday, we also, and Friday and Saturday, we had our Hingham High School Drama Club presented two one-act plays, which were funny and it was delightful to see included freshmen all the way to seniors collaborating and working together to produce the show. And it was very, we really highlighted the talents of our young people. So it's great to see. It's a time of year where we get to see our young people really celebrate their accomplishments this year and art performances, music performances, field days, and different events at school. So we're looking forward to celebrating all the accomplishments of our staff and our students in the next six weeks or so left of school. So.
That's it. Alright, great. Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Adams? Communications? No, no from superintendent. How about Alex? Any student communications for us? Okay, is there anything?
I don't have anything.
No, just counting down the days now. Okay.
We will have whoever is elected announced on the 1st of June. I believe the freshmen will be electing their representative for Student Advisory Committee in the fall, but otherwise, nothing notable.
Okay. A few more weeks, especially with the weather getting nicer. I know it's hard. How about any communications from committee? No? Alright, alright, so we have one piece of unfinished business. So I think Carrie's going to take us through that to give us an update on the Unit B negotiations. Thank you.
So at this point, the Salary and Negotiation Subcommittee has met with Unit B, the bargaining team, and that's our para-bargaining team, along with their MTA rep. We've met nine times so far to discuss the successor contract as the one that is in effect right now ends on August 31st of this year. So we thought it would be a good idea to give the committee and the public a brief update on where we are and where things stand right now. I did get a question about why we're discussing the para-negotiations tonight, but not the teachers, because we are talking with them right now too. But the simple reason is we started speaking with the paras earlier, so we're just further along in the process now with them. So we should also note that our meetings do take place in executive session, which means that they are confidential by law for the school committee. So we can't share too many specifics tonight, but we will share whatever we can and as soon as we can. We started meeting with Unit B, our para-professionals and their MTA rep at the beginning of November. And as I mentioned, we've met nine times so far. The meetings have been generally productive and the bargaining team did a really great job at articulating their concerns and their challenges. So we really appreciated that. And we heard their concerns and have come to tentative agreement on a few of the proposals. Where we're struggling a little bit is around the financial package. As we've publicly shared, this committee has expressed a desire to work with our paras to reach a fair contract. They play a crucial role in the schools and they often work with our most vulnerable students. Personally, as the parent of two students with disabilities who both required one-to-one support from para-professionals during a lot of their school career, I've witnessed firsthand how, just how important their work is and very much appreciate that their jobs are not easy by any measure. So our approach from the start has always been to come from a place of appreciation and with a goal of getting to a fair financial package. And we continue to take that approach and have that goal. We also understand our responsibility to the district, the town, and our students. As a town, we just asked our residents to invest a significant amount of money in our schools in our town, and fortunately, they did. As anyone who has been following our budget discussions, you know that 83% of the school department budget is personnel. It's these contracts that we're talking about right now. And once they're negotiated, the expense is baked into the expense for the budget for the next three years. So if we don't get that right, things will need to be cut down the road to pay these salaries and that's, could be bad for students. And we feel that responsibility as well. Walking into town meeting, somebody handed me a flyer advocating to lift Hingham's para-professionals to, out of poverty. And it cites the MIT Living Wage Calculator and asserts that a living wage in Plymouth County is $45,860. That would be an approximately 125% increase in salary over the current wages earned by the para-professionals. What isn't on the flyer, but is in the paper explaining the Living Wage Calculator is that it assumes that the person earning the living wage is working full-time, which is assumed to be year-round, 40 hours per week, 52 weeks a year. So our committee is approaching these negotiations with the intent to continue to collaborate with our para-collective bargaining team and their MTA rep to ensure that their next contract compensates our paras fairly and appropriately and while also ensuring that it makes reasonable financial sense for the district and our students. We're fully confident that it's possible to do both. And we hope that the Unit B bargaining team and their MTA rep will engage with us in discussions regarding the financial aspect of the contracts going forward. So we will be meeting with them tomorrow afternoon and we hope to continue the conversation.
Usually we don't take questions or comments from unfinished business, but if there is anybody in the room or online that has a question, you can take a couple. Why don't I raise your hand? Anything, Sheri? Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much, Carrie. Alright, so on to new business. So the first order of business is going to be to conduct our yearly elections of officers for school committee. But if you will indulge me, I would like a couple minutes of your time to, one, thank the overall Hingham community, from our educators, again, to our parents, to our students, particularly the students. You guys did an amazing job helping with the override. There was an amazing team of people called Invest in Hingham that helped push this override through the finish line. And as we'd said at town meeting, you know, nobody wants to raise taxes, nobody wants to pay more taxes. But there comes a time when, you know, you have to make your decisions about what's important with the town values. And I think people really showed up at town meeting and at the polls to show what really mattered to them. So we are incredibly grateful for the trust that people had, not just in these committees, school committees, select board, and advisory committee, but the faith and trust that they showed that they have for our Hingham Public Schools. We are incredibly fortunate to have such amazing students, faculty, staff members. This really is a special place and it has been a pleasure to have served as Chair for this past year. This was, it was a big year. I mean, we got Foster School done, we got the override done. And I am just incredibly grateful that you all put your trust in me for this year, to be the Chair, to help Dr. Adams in her first year and Ayesha in her first year and Katie in her first year as interim superintendent and all the other first-year people there. So there has been so much change in the district, but I think we are moving in such a positive direction. And I appreciate all of your help this year in being the Chair. And I also am grateful to the voters for re-electing myself and Jen so that we can continue this work. It's been a long time since there hasn't been a changeover in the school committee that it's the same committee last year as this year. But I think that's going to be very helpful for continuity as we move into the next phase. So as the senior member, it's also crazy, of the committee, I get to open the elections for the Chair, for the role of Chair. And we have one nominee, Ness Corente, to become Chair. So I guess, unless you would like to say anything?
I'm gonna let you have your moment.
So since there's only one person, would all those in favor for Ness Corente as our new Chair? Oh, you want to make a motion? I can't remember. Did we make a motion? Alright, alright.
I'll make a motion to elect Ness Corente as Chair of the school committee.
Thank you. Final second, but alright, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Ness is our new Chair.
Thank you.
Turn the media. Usually there's like a thing where we like change chairs, but since we were sitting next to each other, we figured we were just gonna, yeah. We wanted to do all that.
Alright, so as Chair, I am going to move over to the vice-chair nominations. And there's only one person who is self-nominated and that's Michelle Air. So I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to elect Michelle Air as Vice Chair of the school committee.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I guess I'm in.
Okay, good. Thank you. And then the last position on the executive team is a secretary. Grateful that Jen Benham has put her name in as well. So I will take a motion for Jen.
I'll make a motion for Jen to be Secretary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very gratefully. Thank you.
And now is when I'm going to kind of repeat what Michelle has said. I am so grateful that Jen and Michelle have run for reelection. It has been an honor to be on the executive team with you. And I am so grateful that you have agreed to put your name in for executive team because it will help make the transition to Chair much easier. And I appreciate the school committee members for putting your trust in us as a team. And I'm going to read this because that's what I do. As the saying goes, "The right chair comes along at the right time." Not sure what's in store for me, but I could not imagine a better chair than Carrie during the pandemic and the multiple superintendent searches. Um, and the multiple superintendent searches. And Michelle, through the transition of the new superintendents and historic passage of not only the new building, um, of the elementary school. But also the operational override. Um, I hope to transition us back to business as normal and as usual for school committee members. It has not been that way in a very long time. I think I got, um, maybe three or four months in my first year in two, twenty nineteen. Um, so I'm hoping that this will be the year that we can finally get back to business as usual for school committee members. Um, so I appreciate your, your time and your efforts. Um, and finally, I want to thank families, all of our families, um, for this past year and the past several years. Because without their support, um, we could not do what we do. And I appreciate that it takes, um, a lot of time away from our family time. Um, lots of drives have to be, um, made and, and different plans need to be done. Um, and it's really hard. And I, I think, um, we appreciate what goes on behind the scenes, but, um, not a lot of people do. So, um, I just wanted to, to make mention of that. So, thank you to our families and, um, thank you to the community. All right, so I will, uh, move us over to ten point two. To appoint candidate for interim executive director of student services.
I'm glad to have, um, Dr. Barbara Cataldo. If you want to come up, Barbara, so we can see you. Um, you have a letter, you have a resume in the packet and, um, a letter of appointment. Um, Dr. Cataldo has served in various roles in her educational career, including superintendent of schools. Assistant superintendent for pupil personnel, director of special education and special needs coordinator. In these past roles, she has supported several districts in the development of special needs and special education programs. And provided strong instructional leadership in student services. Most recently, this current school year, she has served as the interim director of special education in the Wayland Public Schools. Um, she holds a doctorate in education from Northeastern, a master's degree from Harvard and a bachelor's of arts from Wheaton College. Um, she has the appropriate licensure and we have applied, um, since Dr. Cataldo is retired. We've applied for a critical shortage waiver and her appointment is contingent on receipt of that waiver. Um, we have heard that the waiver is moving through the pro- process, um, at the Department of Ed, um, and hope to hear, um, shortly. It would be our intent to post for a permanent executive director of student services in January. Um, and conduct a thorough search, um, at that time as well and invite you if you want to add anything, um, Dr. Cataldo.
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you very much for having me tonight. I had a chance to come earlier, uh, last month and meet several of the administrators. And I have to say it's a happy group of folks. From what I could see, I'm very much looking forward to coming down and joining the South Shore again.
Um, we appreciate you, your willingness to come and, um, your experience, um, sounds like a great fit for Hingham Public Schools. Um, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. I think it's time for me to leave. Thank you. Everybody have a good evening.
We need to make a motion.
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right, um, I'll make a motion to appoint Barbara Cataldo as our interim executive director of student services. Subject to receipt of the critical shortage waiver from the Department of Education.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Okay, welcome. Thank you. Um, ten point four to discuss a DS, uh, DUCI literacy grant and act as appropriate. Um, so I assume Katie's taking us through? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm already, oh, to hear a report on elementary writing program. Sorry. I'm already skipping ahead. All right, is this Margaret or Katie?
Uh, well, welcome Monica, um, up to the podium. Um, Monica is our fabulous Ms. Matthews. Our fabulous K through five writing specialist. Um, and as she was sharing, um, some of the work that she's done this year and planning for next year. Um, and as we're moving forward with a new reading program in the elementary, um, grades. We thought it was important to make sure to include, um, some information about writing and how writing is progressing at the elementary grades. Um, and the real focus on preparing our young people as early as kindergarten. Um, as they move into middle school, um, to develop their writing skills. And we're glad to have her, um, expertise, um, as she moves from school to school, really supporting and. Coaching teachers and helping develop the curriculum. If you want to add anything, Katie.
Yeah, I would just add that Monica is one of our most versatile and valuable players in that, um, she's not only navigating us through the writing process. But because, um, Monica has such deep experience at the elementary level, um, in our general education setting. She's really helping us to make connections, um, to the science and social studies curriculum. Um, and really helping us kind of unify, um, our curriculum in really exciting ways. So just, uh, so thrilled to have her, um, on board and again, just her versatility and professionalism. And she very much has, um, the respect of her fellow educators. So, um, I think everyone is just very grateful to have her. So, thank you, Monica.
And I'm very grateful too. I'm very grateful for the override because I, this is my, um, second year in this position. As you know, so it's one of the positions that was, um, a new one added. And so I thought, since this is my first time. Speaking to the school committee, I thought maybe I'd just give a little overview of what it is that I do and about writing. And then I can kind of go into what it is that we're doing, um, right now. But, um, the first, let's see, the first thing I put up here is like a little background knowledge. This is called the writing rope and it just shows, um, all of the different skills that are necessary for writing. Which, you know, I really at this point think that writing is one of the hardest things to teach. It takes the longest trajectory to teach. It takes years and years. Um, and it requires so many skills. At the very bottom is, um, spelling and handwriting. And way up at the top is critical thinking and so is executive functioning skills. In the middle are a lot of the other things we teach, such as text structure and the craft. But really every time anybody picks up a pencil, pen, sits at a keyboard, they have to integrate all of these skills. And so it really is an important skill, but also an incredibly complex one. Um, so I also want to give a little bit of research, a little background on the research about writing because I always feel like, um. First of all, I'll just say that I think that Hingham is super, um, forward-thinking and having created this position. Because reading always is, gets the front seat, um, in literacy skills and writing is always in the backseat. And, um, so I think the fact that this position was created, um, really does speak to. How you value all aspects of literacy skills. Because, um, it definitely is one of those areas that, like I said, it takes the longest, I think, to teach kids. But in addition, um, I think it's one of the ones that teachers often feel the least comfortable teaching. Um, teacher preparation programs at the college, um, college level don't often have very good writing. Programs, um, and the, the real reason is that. There's a ton of research on reading, but there's not a ton of research on writing. The, the research on writing really says. Um, how you should teach it, that it should be taught explicitly. Um, but it doesn't really tell you what to teach, such as with reading where they tell you the phonemes that you should be teaching in order there. That research is not available yet. So, um, that results in a lot of, not very many writing curriculums out there. Um, we are lucky enough to use Empowering Writers in the upper elementary grades. Um, and now with the support of Dr. Adams, we're going to start, um, some initiatives in K and one this year. So, um, I just put up a couple of things from the research, just saying that. That writing is how our students and everyone integrates all their knowledge. You know, everything that you read, that you discuss, then you can kind of make meaning of it when you pick up that pencil and start to write. Um, that writing has to be taught explicitly with guided practice, that students need to write every day. Um, and that integrating writing, which is really what was part of my job description. Into science, social studies and reading instruction is really what helps students make meaning of those subjects. It helps, it increases their comprehension. All right, so what have I been up to for, uh, the past two years? So, um, at the beginning, um, last year, we have our program Empowering Writers. And Empowering Writers really is, it's a very comprehensive program. And so it can be a little bit overwhelming. So what we started with was really honing in on what were those essential lessons that teachers needed to, to focus in on. Um, and then which were the either optional or the supportive ones that could be used as follow-up. And a lot of those lessons then could also be used in small group instruction, um, in our tiered systems of support. So I was able to take all those Empowering Writers lessons and kind of categorize them by what really should be done in the classroom. And then what could be used for small groups and for reinforcement. Um, Andy Hoy and Katie Roberts also invited me to social studies and science PDs. Where the teachers were learning the new curriculum. And then I was able to contribute by helping the teachers think of writing assignments. And writing tasks that could be melded into all of the units that they were developing. Um, in the third grade and fourth grade, for example, for social studies, they, the teachers developed an interactive notebook. And I was able to help them and come up with prompts and very short, quick writing activities. Um, that made sure writing was happening all the time in those content areas. Um, I'm also part of the reading adoption team, really tasked with looking at what the writing strand was. That went with all the programs that we were looking at. Um, now I'll fill you in a little bit on what we decided there. Um, I have been traveling to every elementary school and modeling lessons for teachers. And so I go one day a week to each school. My home base is at Foster, so I'm there on Wednesdays and Fridays. But otherwise I'm at every school, um, during the week. Um, I've done Empowering Writers training now for our newer teachers. So that those that were hired in the past couple of years are now, um, they knew the training, we got the training for them. Um, the principals have been incredibly supportive also and have been giving me time to participate. With the teachers or at data meetings to evaluate how, um, their students are doing with writing. And kind of then I can help them hone in on lessons to support, um, their specific students. And right now I'm in the process of creating a grade one personal narrative unit. And we're going to be training the teachers in a couple of weeks and also training kindergarten teachers in the kid writing, um, approach to writing. Um, so that they'll, they'll be starting that in September. So these are kindergarten writing initiatives. We're going to be adopting this kid writing program for the beginning of school for our youngest, um, students. And they'll be using that through the fall. And then in the winter, we're going to start to incorporate a couple of those Empowering Writers lessons. So that they can start to see the same graphic organizers, start to use the same vocabulary. Um, and also there's a program called Sentence a Day that some teachers have been using. And, um, some are trying out right now, which is a grammar or sentence, um, structure. Program is a little daily routine. Um, so we're going to be doing that professional development, as I said, in two or three weeks. Then I'm going to be developing the pacing guide for kindergarten. Um, for using kid writing through December, January, and then those Empowering Writers lessons in the, the rest of the winter and into the spring. Um, and then we're going to be using inter-reading for spelling. Then you can kind of see, um, this is, I just made a little kind of graphic as you can see. Kind of where we are with each. With each initiative for kindergarten. Um, for grade one, I'm right now creating a personal narrative unit that they're going to be using from September until December, January. Um, and that is going to really give them those routines and structures for Ready Workshop. And then then we're going to, um, start slowly adding in those Empowering Writers lessons. So same thing, they can start to get the same graphic organizers, they can start to, um. Hear the same vocabulary and same terms, but we're going to be doing that training with the K teachers, um, coming up. Then we'll do the pacing guide, same thing with Empowering Writers. Their lessons are on an online platform called The Hub. Um, and they also have Sentence a Day, that, that sentence structure, um, resource available to them. And they're going to be using inter-reading for spelling. And this is that kind of same exact trajectory that we're going to be doing for grade one. Um, with two through five, so what we're going to do now is basically, um, I'll go back to the inter-reading, reading adoption. It was determined from the pilot teachers that the writing strand, no great surprise, just wasn't as comprehensive or as strong as the reading side. So since we have teachers who already were very familiar with Empowering Writers, um, we decided that we would stick with that since it really is explicit instruction. Um, and so what we're going to do is use the pacing of inter-reading. Which is, are these three-week modules of stories. Um, and we're going to put the. I'm going to update the pacing guide to match the new reading pacing. Um, and at the same time, try to add in more tasks that tie in with science, social studies. And the stories that they're reading for each module. And we're going to, oh yes, and we're going to be using the inter-reading grammar, um, and spelling and two through five. So this is just a screenshot of a, um, chart that I've made and I think I handed one out to you just so you could see the front and the back of it. So what, um, one of the things that I did is I went through the new reading program, um, K through five. Each module, um, has a theme and an essential question. And then I went through every story and found any connections to our science or social studies curriculum. Which is what you can see in that yellow and green column. Um, and if there's any specific texts that tie into not just the whole theme, but I put those in the, um, purple column. Then, um, and I also met with Andy Hoy and with Michelle Romano, they went through the whole thing also. And so this is going to be a great resource for teachers too, um, so that we can kind of just get a more comprehensive instructional model. So that it is, it's more thematic and they can see, teachers can kind of see where that writing can come into all their subject areas. So the one that I've handed out to you is just for grade one, but this was done for K through five. Um, so in just two years, um, I'm feeling like teachers are feeling more supportive with the instruction of writing. Where I do feel like it's just one of those areas that, um, not everybody feels a hundred percent about. Um, and more confident about writing instruction. Um, people have been super welcoming and I've been getting lots of positive feedback. People are always inviting me in, which I really love. Um, I think that writing now is more in the forefront of teachers' minds when they're doing their planning and instruction. They're thinking about how can they integrate writing into their planning. Um, we are, as a district, I think, creating a more comprehensive approach to teaching and learning. And bottom line, students are writing more. So, and I'm just getting started, so. If you have any questions, let me know. And thanks for having me. Yes.
I'm, you just worked my writing to my heart, so thank you so much. I love empowering writing. I, uh, teach and use it. I felt like I wasn't confident with teaching writing until I used this program. So I really am a big fan. Um, I think a couple, a couple of highlights that I think are really good is. I know I teach at the older levels, so, but it's, writing's often taught so rote-ly, like, you know. Intro paragraph, five paragraph, essay, claim, evidence, you know, it's very much like a mechanical process of how it's been taught. And this is a program that really is sort of, what are you trying to say? What's the best way to say it, uh, using visual supports, all sorts of. Other supports that work especially with special ed kids. Um, so I'm.
That's great.
I just want, I just want to give as someone who uses it in a completely different district and other, with a completely different age group, like a.
Nice.
Support for this.
And I think like what you bring up too is another, that's another thing that teachers have really reached out to me to do is say, okay, I have students who are struggling with this. And then I can create the materials or create the scaffolds and send them to them and they can use them with that population. So that's been another part that I think has been really helpful. And also I forgot to mention that I have also been meeting with Holly Gogan, who has a similar position at the middle school. Um, so that we can integrate, so, um, kind of the transition from fifth to sixth. So that they know the vocabulary, they know the structure that the kids have been taught and all of that.
Because, and these are the, the building blocks. Have the first slide of that rope that you showed with all the intertwined strands. That rope just gets thicker and thicker and thicker, the more, the more different context, the more purposes people are writing for the.
Exactly.
So it is, you know, you're doing God's work there.
So anyways, thanks for the opportunity. Thank you for the override. Um, yes.
I didn't have so much of a question, more of a fan letter, but.
I think this is amazing and I'm so glad that we not only brought it to the district, but are able to keep it in the district. Um, it is such a life skill that, um, I find working in the private sector is becoming very clear that people did not learn it. Um, I work in financial analysis and I'm often talking to the younger analysts and like. Yeah, I see the numbers, but what, what's this telling us? What's the story? And I got a lot of, well, Sarah's what, twenty-five percent? I'm like, I know, but what's the story? How did that happen? And I get a lot of blank stares. So I'm glad to see that this is really getting some, um, some real attention here. Because it is a life skill that you can use in any discipline. And that's why I think the interdisciplinary approach to this is amazing. So, thank you.
Just to add on, um, in K and one, we've had a lot of discussions around the science of reading. Um, and I think writing is often neglect. And I think writing is often neglected, but writing and reading go hand in hand. And for our youngest learning learners, writing is phonics written down. That process of encoding will help embed the decoding process that they're also learning. And so I know that's some of the work that Monica's excited to get started with our K and one teachers. And hopefully, we can also extend it into our pre-K program as well as we get going, so that writing is seen as another way for us to reinforce early decoding skills of our students. So I think that's an important connection.
And to add to that fanfare, I was at a Foster School Council meeting the week before the election. And we were just talking about what budget cuts might be. And Principal Shifely was just raving about you and he was going to be devastated if we lost you. So grateful that the override got passed and you can continue the great work. He loves that you do the, teach the teachers.
The PLCs, right. And yeah, all of the principals have been really very open about providing meeting time. And so it's, it's, they've made my job easy. So it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Now 10.4.
Okay, to discuss the DESI literacy grant and act as appropriate.
So is this Katie or Margaret?
Sure, happy to take this one. So we're thrilled to share this evening that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has made available some funds for high-quality literacy materials. So as you are aware, we will be adopting the inter-reading program next year, which is one of the top-rated reading programs on both the DESI curate site and also on Ed Reports. So because it's considered a high-quality literacy program, that made us eligible for this grant. And I am optimistic the state does seem to be kind of putting their money where their mouth is with some of these grants that are coming down the pike related to high-quality curriculum materials. So I'm very thrilled that we can share this grant with this evening.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
You know, I just want to say out loud that the option for the grant for you listening.
$154,703, which covers 50% of the purchase of instructional materials and the entire cost of PD. For year one. But so that's huge. So we appreciate the work together.
Yeah, thank you. It's great to see the Department of Ed putting money, the state putting money behind the programs that we are trying to do. They're ready for.
I'm ready for a motion.
I will make a motion to accept the DESI literacy grant in the amount of $154,703 to help defray the cost of the district's planned adoption of the evidence-based K through five reading program.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, 10.5, to discuss athletic full-day kindergarten, kids in action, integrated pre-K and facility fees and act as appropriate now that we know what the answer is from the override.
Yes.
We can move forward on this. Ayesha?
Thank you. In terms of those fees for the, the full-day kindergarten, you voted those fees in as part of the level services budget. So I'm pleased to say that the amount of that, the fee will be $2,950. So that will be the amount of the kindergarten fee for this upcoming year. I know most parents will probably waiting just to see what that amount would be. So now we can definitely share that information with families. There'll be no need for a vote to be taken again on that particular fee, because you've already done so. But I just wanted to make sure that we are realizing that now. The second part of the, the second part of the fees were the athletic fees. Those fees were also another fee that we discussed as part of the budget process this year. But I think you've seen so many iterations of it in terms of whether we kept freshmen, the freshman sports, whether, you know, and the different levels of the fees that I even had to go back to remind myself, what was the original fee again, right? So I wanted to just bring it up here so that everybody's aware of what that is. The student athletic fee will be $375. It's a small increase from $325. But from discussions with Dr. Adams, we decided, and with Jim Portremoni as well, we decided that we wouldn't want to, because we haven't increased fees from since 2014, we didn't want the students for this year to bear the full brunt of that increasing fee, but to gradually over time, bring it to a level where we think it probably should be. So this will be a gradual change from this year. For those students who pay a hockey, they will get a $200 fee. And the pro-family rate cap will move up to $950 from $800. So just to make everybody aware of that.
Those are still annual rates.
Annual rates.
It doesn't matter whether it's one sport or three.
Exactly. Mr. Portremoni thought that that was useful in terms of ensuring that the high level of student participation that we have. In terms of going, people that going to a pool sport rate could hamper participation. So we wanted to keep it that way as well.
Especially if everyone has the one sport they're really into and one that they may be on the fence about it, would I push them to try that one?
Exactly. It definitely gives students the opportunity to try many different sports.
Sure. Finance back in September was fees. And I just want, I'll just add, and I know we said it in many of the budget discussions, that this rate is very comparable to.
It is.
To the other districts around us.
And it's probably on the lower side.
Yes.
In terms of what those fees are. But as I mentioned before, we didn't want to just increase the fees right away, all the way to where we thought it should be. Just because it would just mean that those students this year would spend, would actually get the brunt of that fee increase. And we thought it should be a gradual increase rather than a spike in the price right away.
And, and to add to, as Ayesha mentioned, fees haven't been adjusted since 2014.
Right.
And what typically happens is, over time, the athletic fee, the total cost of athletics, gets absorbed more and more into the operating budget. Because if we think about like coaches, they get additional pay every single year, but that fee has not been following along. So we have been absorbing more and more into the operating budget. So this is going to help.
Deflect that cost.
Yeah, yeah.
So thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
And this is the, these are the fees we agreed on initially under the level services.
Exactly. So there's no change, right? I, I know that there may have been, there definitely were discussions earlier as part of the process as well. If it is that it would balance in the act of, okay, if we were to bring, if we didn't get override pass and had to bring back freshman sports, how much more the fee would have to be increased?
Right.
But thankfully, we are in that place and we can have a moderate increase in the price of the athletic fee.
Okay.
Your mind. Dr. Adams, anything? In terms of the kids in action, the before and after school program, for those fees, those increase, we increase by 5% this year. We're changing the model of how kids in action, after, the after-school program is, is brought to students and families this year. Instead of it being only at specific buildings, each building will have their own kids in action program for after-school care. So that means that we will have to increase the staffing model in terms of, instead of having everybody be in one building, it would have, and all, this is what I'm saying, I'm going to increase in the staffing just to make sure that everybody's clear. Kids in action pays for all of its staff itself, including its health insurance benefits. So there is no burden on the town for any increases in staffing for kids in action. That 5% increase will make sure that, across the board, when you look at the entire program, before, after, and pre-K, that we're able to cover all costs as well as leave a healthy amount within our revolving account and contribute to the operating budget as well. We think that even as, as we go through this year, we know that we will get better, a better understanding of that new, a change in the structure and that model. And we'll be able to tweak things a little bit more as we move forward in upcoming years.
Is there anything that, on transportation, if we move it to each of the schools, will that save any money?
It will. So the only place where we'll still have some transportation is with the before school. That will not be enough for building, just because the numbers in that part of the Sulu. But it doesn't really make sense to try to have it in each building as yet. If they will, and there aren't many families that use the before school care. So that will probably be something that will be in, in a couple of buildings. But as it works out this, right now, all of the students move from, except those students, for example, who are in their home, home building, they're transported across town at the end of the school day. That will not happen anymore. It will also be a saving of time for the kids in terms of just being in their own building and in a familiar place as well. And we think that will be, will be positive, a positive move forward.
We, if we are guessing that it may increase enrollment, because one of the common concerns of families is if they had students of multiple ages, they were going to two or three, in some cases even three buildings to pick up students. So this will reduce that and may increase the enrollment over time. So the guess of ours at this point.
Is a great change. My own experience with it, I so many nights remember it being 552 and being. Take a right or left on me. The street, I gotta pick up one at South and one at Foster. Couldn't have been in further places when we were a PRS family. So drove by their school and then had to pick which way to go, who was going to pick up first. And I think it's so, and it's just so much less disruptive for the students as well, particularly the younger ones. They still feel kind of guilty about that. Yeah.
Just one question. Do we still have to only have one nursing coordinator available for the, when you've got the multiple schools? Or do you have to have a nurse for each individual school?
That, that is one thing that we're exploring right now. The director, Mrs. Sony and I were discussing this last week. And we're looking into whether it is the possibility, we haven't finalized things yet, of maybe having, asking and seeing if even some of the building nurses would be willing to stay later and look at different things that we can do to the nursing. But we haven't finalized how we will fund it. But we are looking at how that, that structure is going to work. But we'll need to have, where, where we have students with needs, we will have to have a nursing place to care for them and just to make sure that that happens.
The custodial staff in each school will then, okay. So you're factoring all that into the cost benefit analysis. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
The last one that I have are the facilities fees. I just made a few copies here because I know. Oh yes, did I say, sorry. I did say that the pre-K, the integrated pre-K. With that model, we also increased fees by 5% as well. And in this case here, only model students pay the fee-based tuition. We're hoping that as, as Foster opens up, we could expand that program and possibly, who knows, maybe try to expand hours and everything else, because it's only offered on a half-day basis. So time will tell, but for now, we're, if you look at the rates for the pre-K program, they're comparatively very low compared to even the pre-K for KIA or other pre-Ks in town. And the reason for that is to try to attract model students to come into the program as well.
That was my question. If we were to increase the fee for the integrated pre-K, do we think, I know historically we've had trouble recruiting some of the typical peers. So is this going to further deter people from signing up?
Yes, because the, the rates are still comparatively very low, even compared to other pre-K programs in town and other pre-K programs near us. We still believe that it would be a way to attract students coming in who want to. And even in terms of preliminary registration numbers that we're seeing, it's already at a similar level to what it was before. So we're comfortable that it'll, it'll remain that way.
Yeah, I think if we adjust the schedule down the road, I think that would, that would help a lot.
Exactly.
That's the feedback. Everyone loves the program.
Yep.
I think spacing wise, that once the foster opens up in a year, we'll be able to, with, in combination with the integrated pre-K and KIA, open additional classrooms. And we'll have to look at this rate really carefully as we offer.
Right.
More programs, so that we're covering cost as well as being competitive with local programs.
And then with facilities, this new structure here, it just takes into consideration the MOU that we're going through with the rec center. I think that the schedule I provided in the past, did need to include the fact that most of the, our fields are kind of managed by the rec in terms of fee collection. So that's included in here as well. And really, of course, custodial rate is the one that really, we, we collect. And into the, in that custodial rate, we've also included a slight increase for custodial fees, utilities, and maintenance as well. Because right now, we have, even if it's somebody just booking a room, there's so many aspects of, of our staff that touch, have a touch point on it. One of the things that Ms. Katie Hartman is looking at right now is looking at software that she can put in place so that people can book a room and it can, and everybody can automatically be notified about that, about that information. So it'll save so much time in terms of people, if people move in from different buildings, et cetera. So that will help the efficiencies of how we, we do manage our rental within, within Hingham Public Schools. And hopefully, it will help us in terms of saving, in terms of that part of it as well.
Yeah, it's important that the software also.
And the fact that tier system.
Exactly.
Makes that up.
Yes. So in terms of, of vote, I don't know if you'd be prepared to give us a vote for facilities tonight, as well as the KIA and integrated pre-K fees as well.
Are you ready to make a comment? Yeah, all right. All right, so I, so athletic fees and full-day kindergarten are already approved. So I will make a motion to a 5% increase in the kids in action and integrated pre-K program fees.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Facilities fees are, for that too? Then I would make a motion to accept the increases in facility usage fees as, as recommended by Director of Business Services.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And just, if people want, these will be included in the, they're in the packet. So they'll be, when we send out the information, the recap. Okay.
Yes, right.
And you'll, will you let the committee know if there's sort of a wild swing in enrollment or in use of these programs? Is on the feed, just, I don't think there will be, I don't think any of us think there will be, but just in case, just.
Yes. I mean, one of the places that we were excited to see how it goes would be the KIA, where the change. We will keep you informed of that. I think Ms. Sony is on, is online as well. And she really does so much in terms of managing the program. I should definitely shout out to her and say thank you for all that she does in terms of, you know, and this, this year, we've really pushed her to the limit in terms of strings. She's doing strings this year. She's doing expanding the KIA. She's doing a Spanish pre-K program. So we're definitely, she's definitely been stretching the limits. So we thank you for all, how hard work in that area as well.
Thank you very much, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
It is an amazing program.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so 10.6 to review the MOU with the Hingham Police and act as appropriate.
With the policy subcommittee, we did some work on this throughout the school year. We did a review of the Comfort Animal, which the policy subcommittee recommended become part of the MOU. So the description of some of the agreements were added to the end. In addition, there is some language around body-worn cameras by the police department that the Hingham Police is already in use as part of their work. But how the body-worn cameras would interact when they're in the schools, the Hingham Police. There is some language in, let me see, my Roman numerals number 11 was added there about our agreement with them about how if they, if there is any video. About how, if they, if there is any video that that would be, um, and how that would be used in conjunction with the schools.
And I'll just add the comfort dog section. That's what we approved, I think, like two months ago. So it's literally just copied and pasted into the. For the comfort dog.
Any questions, comments?
I think our intent was to do like a first read tonight and then put it on the agenda for next time for a second read. Um, if there were any additional questions, so.
And it's also part of the policy to review the MOU on a yearly basis. So we're checking that out.
Um, so one question I had, it, it talked about, um, the chief and the superintendent shall provide a mechanism for receiving feedback. In the school community, including principals, teachers, students and families, um, which the SRO designed. Is that something that we've constantly?
Yep, the policy subcommittee, um, looked at, um, some survey data from particularly students. Um, and their, um, interactions with, uh, and reported back. Um, some of that feedback, um, to the policy subcommittee. And I believe we did it to the whole committee. It's a little fuzzy now. I'm like, oh no, they came and presented that, um, feedback. Um, remember? Yes.
I need to bring Audrey with me, then we'll remember.
Um, okay, so we'll, um. Move this forward to the next meeting.
We have to change the years on the MOU. It says twenty-two.
Oh.
I just noticed that.
Okay, so ten point seven to discuss participation in the state's school choice program from twenty twenty-three. To twenty twenty-four school year and act as appropriate. Will you take us through this, Dr. M?
Sure, I provided some information, um, and perhaps we can have a discussion on the interest. There's a list of. School districts first that participate or have chosen not to participate as well in school choice across the state. So you get a sense of who's participating and, um, who, um, is not. Um, there is also, um, a document that outlines the state law, um, general law, national general law on school choice. Um, and a frequently asked questions, um, and answers on, on school choice. Um, one of the things that could be considered by the, the school committee is to think about, um, maybe perhaps piloting, um, school choice. Um, since we, um, have enrollment, um, space at our middle school and high school primarily. Is considering a, a small pilot, um, a small number of students. Remember they, students come, we generate revenue of, 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 um, an amount that's set by the state every year. Um, in addition, if there are special education costs with any students, we are reimbursed at, uh, using a calculator provided by the state. Um, as well, that provides additional funds. Um, and depending on the number of students we accept, it does present a buffer and, um, an amount that can be used. Um, to support, um, a staff member or, um, and additional staff if, if needed. Um, over time, so, um, depending on the will of the committee. Um, whether we might consider a pilot, um, of a small number of students or. Uh, you have voted in the past, um, not to enter into school choice, so.
Comments?
Um, I mean, I'll just, I think it's, it's a. Bigger discussion, I think. Um, and I'll just, I mean, I, I really appreciate, uh, the data that you sent us with the. Links to the website with all the, the local towns. Um. I did a quick look at the list to see if it ever benchmark towns. Um, I didn't, I only noticed a couple. Doesn't mean whether for or against, but, um. And then I also looked to see if we have ever accepted school choice and I couldn't. I didn't see that. And then my, getting to my question is, do we, if we don't. Accept school choice in, can we still, do we send students out for school choice, I guess is my question? Currently, we do. So, okay. It does, oh, it does, okay.
We can look and see, we can look and see in that number.
I don't think it's, that's where we get, um, in terms of the school choice. I don't think we lose that much, but I can look it up on Tally as well.
Yeah, it's just interesting, cause there's not a lot of local towns on the list. I was curious. Look, I think Car- Carver is one. I'm in an immediate vicinity, which is interesting. And the towns that we compare ourselves to, most of them don't, um, don't have it. My concern about it, just looking through the FAQs, is we, we really would have no control over who came in. It has to be. Um, kind of a lottery system. And it could be somebody who's been expelled from their district. It could be, um. I, I just have concerns with that. And I, I appreciate the revenue part, part of it, um, and I, I, I think that's good, but I wonder if. You know, depending on who we, who we got, like, it could actually cost the district money too. So that's, that's. I'd like to know, I guess I'd like to know more about why so many towns that we are, we consider peers, either benchmarks or. That we just like to compare ourselves to, don't do it. And like, what's, you know, and why, and why would we, you know, going forward?
I think the primary often driver is space. They just do not have space. Like they're, they're, they're. Struggling with their class size and they just can't accommodate. It would be an additional staff. Um, in our cases, if we were to try it, we could a- aim for specific grades. Say sixth grade and ninth grade, um, where we have lost a little bit of enrollment at those transition points. And narrow down, we can even say the number of slots that we are willing to take. So we have control over. The grade level and the number of students that, um, we can open it up fully or just be very, very narrow in our scope.
And then I'm assuming once we accept them in, kind of like the medical students, we have them until graduation.
And the, and the siblings do?
Yeah, siblings do. And siblings too? It's similar, okay. Michelle, did you have something?
Um, no, just that, this is one of those things that requires a public hearing too.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, that was me. What is the process?
We would have a public hearing and then a vote afterwards.
So you're, you're, everybody opts, you have to opt out. So if we neglect to vote by June first, we're automatically.
And is the reimbursement, sorry, um, the reimbursement, is it a set, is it a set number by the. Commend, so everybody gets the same and whatever that is. And, okay. And so this year it was five thousand dollars per student.
And it, it's, it impacts you on two cases, on the, the five thousand for school choice, and then you also get an additional. Amount as part of chapter seventy funding, because you will, you will also increase your number of students in enrollments as well.
So do we get our rate for the chapter seventy funding, or do we get the incoming district's rate?
I think it's ours, but I have to confirm that. I have to confirm. Whatever we, we get for, whatever we get for all our students into the chapter seventy, that is not based on the rate itself, but it's in terms of how. Funding is given by student.
Yeah.
Um, by the state, it's not based on our rate per seat. So we don't necessarily get, get funded our, our exact rate.
Okay, okay. Is it, is it, I mean, I would be willing to, to hear what other people have to say. If we have a public hearing, that doesn't, ha- having the public hearing doesn't mean we're doing it, correct? It's just, it's giving, it's giving the public the opportunity to weigh in.
Yep, and then you would take a vote.
How's everyone feeling about that?
Okay, before, I mean, before the public hearing, I'm not sure, I don't know if, is there like an elevator pitch, Margaret? That you'd wanna get, like, I think we're hearing a lot of reasons why we maybe wouldn't wanna do it besides the money. Uh, I know you're a proponent of it. Um, I don't, maybe, I, maybe I don't know that you're a proponent of it. I guess I'm assuming you're a proponent of it, but, uh. I'm just wondering if there's an elevator pitch about something.
It provides, it can provide, um, depending on the size of the program, it is a source of funding. It's a creative source of funding that can provide, um, funding would go into a revolving account. You saw in the materials. The amount would have to go some, you know, towards a purpose, but it could help, um, depending on the amount. Uh, of students we take, um, support, a staff member, that as we move forward in the next couple of years. Would provide, um, the ability to keep an additional staff member that we might have to consider, um, letting go. So it's a creative source of funding and it won't impact class size depending on the amount of students. Um, we, you know, it's the difference between, you know, eighteen students or nineteen students in a classroom depending on their placement. Um, and how we decide to distribute the students, so.
Thank you.
Think about the extracurricular activities as well and how that might impact after-school activities or sports. Um, could it possibly take away from that? Uh, would we be at, at capacity? So I know that there are some sports we would bring in the eighth graders because we don't have enough. Um, students to participate at that level, but will it have a negative impact for other. Sports or activities?
I think it's variable on the students that we take in. If they're athletes, they're, they're part of the school, so they're a member of our student body. As everyone else is and, um. I think they might enhance, enhance all those extracurricular activities in their participation, but.
Alright, so we'll move forward and have a public hearing at our next meeting.
And plan to vote.
Yes. You need to vote next meeting.
Yes, we need to vote, that's right.
We'll have to, we'll look up the rules and.
Yeah.
Publicity around a public hearing.
Just gonna say that, right. Yeah, cause we have to put it, add it out in the paper and.
Yes, I believe it. Are they, are they all the same? Are the public hearing rules all the same?
Okay, okay, alright.
Wouldn't need to be.
I, I think this is your decision. Um, it's a school committee decision, um, with the additional students, but.
Well, and also just remember that you're automatically in it unless you opt out.
Right.
Yeah, so I don't think that would be.
Okay. Alright. Okay, um, alright, so then ten point eight, um, to discuss the process for subcommittee assignments, this is me, um. Um, now that we've got our newly elected board and, uh, members, we'll go through and, um. Figure out assignments for subcommittees and liaisons. So I'll send an email of the, um, current. Subcommittees and liaisons, and if you could send me a message back on what your preferences are, um, we will then discuss, um. Those new placements at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm just been chugging all day thinking, it's so, we're all like on different schedules, like for the faculty. The beginning of the year is like, you know, there's the new year, January first, there's the beginning of the school year for the faculty and students. Francha, it's July first, and for us, it's some random, random Monday in May. Random Monday in May, we're gonna start a new.
Start a new year. Um, okay, so on to eleven, uh, subcommittee and project reports. Ally, start with you.
Thank you. Um, and on that note, I can't believe it's the new year. Last year.
Happy anniversary.
Um, we had our final meeting of the Special Education Task Force last week. We did some work around, um, coming up with job descriptions for PERS. And Margaret, you can expect, um, a summary from Suzanne. She's kind of putting together all of the thoughts that came out of the task force. And then we'll be sending them along to you for feedback. And then otherwise, Human Rights Alliance has a board meeting tomorrow night and, um. The Climate Action Committee is working on the final draft of the plan. Thank you for anyone who sent me feedback. I, um, consolidated it all and sent it over to them. And it's already in the plan, so next time you look at the draft, you'll see it in there. And they should be wrapping up their work because at town meeting. We have officially changed from Climate Action Planning Committee to Climate Action, um, Committee. To actually execute the plan. So be looking for someone on the school committee to represent that next year as well. And that's it.
Uh, next Monday, my friend Carrie and I are gonna be doing office hours. They're gonna be a little bit shorter this time because we're bumping up against, uh. Negotiation, a, a different meeting that, uh, Carrie and I also have to be in. But it will be from, uh. Eight, uh, from seven o'clock until eight o'clock, uh, over at the high school.
Eight to nine.
Eight to nine, at the high school. Thank you. In Hingham, thank you. Uh, room one thirty-one, I believe, that they'll be assigned posted. Uh, and that'll be the last office hours of the year. So if anyone has any, um. Wonderful, wonderful, final thoughts. Uh, the Educational Programming Committee is gonna be meeting on, uh, May twenty-fourth, which is a Wednesday at four o'clock. Uh, we're gonna be, among other things, going over the technology, uh, plan. And special ed, I just wanted to say, there's not a meeting scheduled right now for the Special Education Subcommittee. I think that's probably a committee where, uh, there'll be some turnover with us. So we're sort of, and while we are, uh, just. Appointed the interim, um, Student Services Director, uh, we thought it might be a good idea to wait until there's the new team to go forward about. Uh, definitely not, not losing any momentum on the survey data that we went over that I talked about the last school committee meeting. Um, and just for in- information, uh, the Hingham Educational Foundation is gonna be meeting tomorrow. Uh, in a not open meeting, but they're gonna be doing their grant reviews. So if anyone, uh, has been following the, their mini grants for. Um, teachers, um, that will be announced after tomorrow.
So the Hingham Middle School Council met last Monday, um, May, May first. Everyone was very happy and relieved about the override, so. Uh, we discussed updating the handbook, um, and increasing awareness of after-school activities, especially. For students who are moving from fifth grade to sixth grade, trying to get them early and make them aware of everything that's there. Um. It also mentions that they're going to be doing a move update for, for eighth graders going to Hingham High School this year, so similar to what the fifth graders do. Um, which should hopefully help with the transition and kind of smooth that out. Uh, salary negotiation, as I mentioned, we have a scheduled meeting tomorrow with Unit B, which is the paraprofessionals, and Thursday with Unit A, the teachers. Um, and then we have scheduled, meetings scheduled with both units through the end of the school year.
Um, I have Foster School Council. We met on April twenty-seventh, um, Professor, Professor. Principal Shifely gave an update on the building project and, um, planning around some of the year-end activities since outside space is limited. And then you've got some warrants in your packet.
Um, High School Council met at some point in the last, since the last time we met, I don't remember the date. Um, we talked, um, a lot about the, um, graduation requirement, um, the, uh, community service being a graduation requirement. Um, it's complicated, um, just how's it gonna be tracked, who's gonna be in charge of it, what would the stipend be for someone to do that? What's the responsibility? Um, there's a smaller group that's done, um, some research into what other benchmark towns have done. Um, and how they, like, ones that have really successful community service, um, uh, graduation requirements. One, like, some districts have, you know, they require forty hours, um, for high school and, um, and they include. They keep like a list, uh, like a website. They maintain a website that shows what organizations are looking for help, where you can go, where you can volunteer. So it, there's, there's definitely a lot to it. Um, so everyone's committed to moving forward with it. It's just a matter of, you know, sort of pilot it maybe for next year. Um, and see how it goes and figure out some logistics to it. Um, I mean, I do think there's a lot of students who do a lot of volunteer work, so, um, already, so we don't think it'll be. Really scrambling for ideas. There's always, you know, plenty of organizations, particularly locally, that need help. Um. And the Building Committee met as well. We have a meeting next Wednesday, night, I think, the seventeenth. Um, to just keep updating on where we are with Foster School, um. If you ever drive by it, it's amazing the progress that they've made already. Um, we're getting the bids in now for the actual construction cost. And looking at those, um.
Alright, so then, the twelve items not regularly known within forty-eight hours in advance. Anybody have anything? Um, we've got our next school committee meeting on May twenty-second, uh, twenty twenty-three at seven fifty PM, um, which will now be. A public hearing. And then, um, June twelfth at seven and June twenty-sixth. I can't believe we're talking about June. Oh.
May sixteen. Oh, May sixteen. The Metco, just for us, but.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yes, just a reminder.
Oh, yeah, so the Metco parent meeting, uh school committee members are attending Metco parent meeting on.
Tuesday, May sixteen.
May sixteen, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Alright, um I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Um make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.